And efficiently. All MCAT buses and trolleys are handicapped accessible. Visit www.mcat.org for routes, schedules, and video tutorials on how to ride MCAT. Manatee County Area Transit, where it's easy to ride.
A roundabout is a compact circular intersection with traffic flowing counterclockwise around a center island. Roundabouts can have a single lane or multiple lanes. Roundabout design channels traffic into the flow and are designed to slow traffic approaching and within the roundabout. Splitter islands direct and slow traffic as it enters the roundabout. The splitter islands offer pedestrians and bicyclists a spot to pause as they cross the road, allowing for safer crossings. The center island uses truck aprons, a raised area around the center island, which gives large trucks and even emergency vehicles a bit more room to move through the circle.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this specially scheduled meeting of the Manatee County Planning Commission for Thursday, May 30th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could remind everyone to please turn your cellphones off, so I don't have to throw the gavel at you later. Good morning, Ms. Greer. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda from yesterday's upload.
Ms. Schenk, anything to the county attorney's office?
No changes.
No changes. All right. We have had previously submitted May 15th, 2024 minutes for approval. Chair Luntan a motion? Motion by Mr. Rutledge, second by Ms. Esslinger. You may vote. Motion passes five to one with one abstention? Oh, got it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Item number one. Ms. Greer, would you please read item number one? Oh, no, citizen comments, I'm sorry. So, we now have a moment to have any citizen comments for things that are not on the agenda today, but future agenda items. So if there's anyone in the public that would like to come forward and discuss anything for a future agenda item, now is your time. Okay. Ms. Greer, please read item number one into the... Do we need swearing in front? Oh, yeah, we do for this one. We will in a second. Or we can do it now. Someone move ahead. There you go. Thank you, Ms. Greer.
Item number one, PDR 2347G Deer Park Plan Development. Buckeye Property Investor LLC is the owner. It's quasi judicial. We have Laura Gonzalez here for staff. It's approving a general development plan for a residential single-family subdivision with a total of 261 dwelling units on approximately 87 acres, Zone PDR. And it's generally located north of Buckeye Road and east of Pritchard Road.
Thank you. This is a presentation on request, but applicant, would you like to come forward and make a statement?
Mr. Chair, this is a disclosure of ex parte.
Oh, is anyone here in the ex parte communications on this item?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name with an address and residence in county residence.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jag Rupnerian with Simply Dwell Homes, Division President. County of residence is Manatee County, and yes, I've been sworn in. Today on the project team, we've got myself, Ivory Matthews, Jonathan Scott, Katie Alderman. We have RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, Tom Sakarsky, Alexis Crespo, and with Atwell Group, we've got Jeremy Fireline, and we've got Kimberly Horn with Chris Kennedy, Ale Koffner, and Becca Bond and Christopher Hatton. Today, I want to talk a little bit about the new brand. Simply Dwell Homes was founded by Southwest Florida's largest private builder, and we're focused on providing value-based housing for people who can't otherwise partake in homeownership. And we intend to do that by building homes with a quality product and a straightforward process. Through value engineering, we intend to provide a price point that is not in the market right now. And we're doing so in a community called Broadleaf, which is in Parrish. Maybe some have seen already, it's 266 lots. It's a three-year build-out. Our strategy with that community is 96 homes a year, which is two homes a week. Start pace, we started that community at 299,000. It ranges somewhere in the low 400s, on the top end of that scale. The square footage of those homes are 1,300 square foot to about 2,600 square foot. We've sold 32 homes to date. 20-plus of those buyers are truly a first-time home buyer and otherwise wouldn't be able to afford a home. And so what I encourage is that we are doing something that is needed in the market, that is a good value for that buyer with interest rates rising the way they are. These buyers are really sensitive to payment and overall price, and we're providing a price point that's not in the market in style. So I want to turn it over to Tom to talk a little bit more about the project.
Good morning, Tom Sakarsky. For the record, I have been sworn with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I reside in Sarasota County. We are in agreement with the staff report and conditions placed by staff, and we have our whole team here if you have any questions.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? Staff presentation? Ms. Greer?
It's presentation's upon request, so...
They can just say no then.
I can go brief? No? Okay. If you have any question?
Welcome to the public comment portion. Is anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public to speak for or against this item? Seeing no one come forward, staff closing comments? Applicant closing comments? I drove by Broadleaf, which is not this project, but the one they have under construction. I drove by as affordable housing is near and dear to me in my past. I drove by it a couple of weeks ago, and it's nice out there. It really is. I thought they did a nice job with the architecture, so look forward to them continuing ahead. Chair Luntan a motion? Motion by Mr. Rutledge, second by Ms. Onstadt. May vote. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Greer, item number two.
Item number two, ordinance 2443 LDCT 2413. It's a county-initiated Land Development Code text amendment for county impact fees. It's amending the Manatee County Land Development Code, Chapter 2, to provide new and revised definitions of terms related to impact fees, and amending and restating Chapter 11 related for impact fees.
All right, thank you. Staff, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Nicole Knapp, Director of Development Services, and I have been sworn. So this morning, we're here to present a Land Development Code text amendment, 2413, all related to impact fees. The code amendments presented in Exhibits A and B, which can be found at the ending of the ordinance, are limited to those changes necessary to recognize the new study, amending new or revised definitions, a new fee schedule, and respective amendments to the Land Development Code throughout for consistency purposes. As you all know, setting fees is a policy decision of the Board, so today your role is to find the impact fee study and provisions of the ordinance, including Exhibits A and B, to be consistent with the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan. So what are impact fees? Impact fees are a one-time fee assessed on new development. When a new home or business is built or expanded, it impacts county services such as our law enforcement, public safety, roads, libraries, parks. Impact fees cannot be used to replace, maintain, or existing infrastructure, and they are not a tax, but rather a fee collected for a service. So look at it like a contractual agreement to build growth-related infrastructure. And why do we have impact fees? The Comprehensive Plan is the county's growth management manual and establishes policies to how to handle infrastructure services as we grow. Based on our population and employment forecasts referred referenced in the impact fee study, new growth and development in the county is expected to continue into the foreseeable future, placing ever-increasing demands on our parks and natural resources, roads, law enforcement, public safety, libraries, which is collectively known as our county capital facilities. All this growth requires expansion of those facilities to accommodate the new growth and are provided to serve both residential and visitors to the county. Impact fees that ensure that new development pays its fair share of the costs incurred by the county for funding this capacity-adding infrastructure to accommodate the increase in population and to ensure that we're maintaining levels of service. So Florida statute states that we must periodically revise the study and set our fees, so that the assessment of fees is based on the most recent and localized data. That general rule of thumb is five years, but as you probably all are aware, the last time our fees were updated were December of 2015, and then put into effect three or four months later, that spring of 2016. Impact fees must represent new developments' proportionate share of capital costs for system improvements, which when our consultant steps forward, we've been working under a consultant, and I'll introduce them in a little later, but they will present more technical side of the impact fees. They will go over in greater detail about the demographics and analysis, development projections, and infrastructure needs and the cost analysis. They'll also go into how the growth-related infrastructure needs for level services calculated, and how the fee payers must receive a benefit. So as I mentioned, the county's been, while we've been implementing impact fees for the last 30-some-odd years or more, 35 years or more, the last time we updated our fees were December of 2015. And at that time, the Board at that time set the fees at 80%. And as you can see, roughly a year, or exactly a year later, then the fees were increased to 90%. And a year later, when it was thought that we would go up to 100%, so that would have been spring of 2018, the Board at that time made the decision to keep the fees where they were. So the current fees that we are collecting are 90% of what the study from 2015 would have said was the appropriate fee to pay the fair share of the cost. On this slide here, this slide is meant to show you the differences between the current fees that we're implementing from 2015 and the study that you have in front of you. You'll see that while we're still planning to assess our residential dwelling units the same, you may notice that there's a different, a little bit of a subtle difference in our tiers and how they're broken out. And we've created a smaller tier. So right now, our smallest assessment of anything on a residential structure, multifamily or single-family duplex or mobile home, is 1,000 square feet or less. And what we've introduced, the Board asked us to introduce this as part of the workshops we had a year ago, is to introduce a smaller tier to help offset or mitigate the affordable housing crisis. So now you'll see we have that 750 square feet or less, and then 751 to 1,000 square feet. You'll also notice that the larger tiers are being capped at a smaller number, if you will. And that's to account for the multimodal trips which can be captured at those new tiers, meaning that you don't see a difference in the pay, excuse me, in the fee rate for multifamily, once you go over that 1,300 to 1,700 tier, and you don't see a fee change or increase when you go 1,700 square feet or larger for single-family. I'm sorry, I turned it off. There we go. I apologize. This fee, this slide similarly is for non-residential, so commercial and manufacturing-like industrial schools, you can see lodging on there. And the notable things to point out here is the difference now is right now, we assess our commercial shopping centers for every 1,000 square feet. The study will show that it should be broken out into three different tiers for commercial shopping centers or commercial uses and shopping centers. And then similarly with gas stations, right now, we assess based off of the square footage of the C store and a canopy square footage, and if the fees are adopted, the fee schedule that's in the study, it will show going to three different tiers for gas stations. Not a lot to point out here. This is just to reemphasize that the study in front of you will, shows that we will maintain the four different road benefit districts that we currently have today. There were some recent legislative policy updates that the Board must consider when setting their policy decision of setting their fees. Those changes set limits on the amount and frequency with which the county can increase impact fees. So as you'll see here, the legislation states that if you do increase your fee not more than 25%, you're to do it in two equal increments. Whatever that increase is, it will be over two years. And if you increase your fees between 25 and 50%, those fees must be incremented in four equal increments. If you exceed the 50% of your current rate, then that's where it says you need to demonstrate extraordinary circumstances, have additional public hearings, and at least a two-thirds vote. After completing the data collection and finalization of the impact fee study and presenting the data to the Board through previous workshops, and after conducting community and stakeholder engagement, this past February, 2024, the Board made a motion to direct staff to proceed with the public hearings to amend the Land Development Code, which is why we're here today, adopting the study prepared by our consultant, Benash, and a new impact fee study not to exceed 50%. So that's that second bullet point, in four equal annual increments to the maximum extent that is permitted by Florida statute. So they, the Board has directed staff that, to bring you the amendments to the Land Development Code that would implement basically bullet point number two. And with that, I would like to turn, we've been working under Benash as a consultant, as I've mentioned. Today, we have with us Negan Camp with Benash, and she'll give you the more technical analysis of how the study is brought together and the results of that. And then at the end of her presentation, I'll step forward for some closing remarks and next steps.
Good morning. Negan Camp with Benash. Oh, no problem. Thank you. So the presentation really goes over primarily is to go over the technical study and the calculations. The study is using what we call a consumption-based methodology, which charges new growth for the value of the infrastructure that it is consuming. And the way it is calculated, it ensures that the revenues generated are sufficient only to add the necessary capacity and are not at a level to correct any existing deficiencies, which is one of the legal requirements. So the basic impact fee formula looks at cost to add capacity, that's the value of the capital assets the county owns right now. And from that, we subtract any non-impact fee revenues that are being utilized, the taxes, and so far, that will come from future development. So to the extent that county is using general taxes, a portion will be paid by future development, and we don't want to charge them twice, once through the impact fee and once through the tax. And then that net cost gets multiplied by demand, which is measured in terms of travel for the transportation impact fees and on population for the other fees. So each fee, each of the service areas have several components when we calculate the fee, and I'll go over them. And before we get into the details, this slide shows the calculated fees for the residential land uses. And in this one, we were showing, under the current fee, the current adopted school impact fee. So you can see that really the main point of this slide, this is before the 50% cap, is that maybe 80, 85% of the residential fees are schools and transportation, and then in the non-residential, about 90-plus percent is transportation. So those two make up the bulk of the total fee, and all the others are relatively small. This slide is just kind of showing a summary of the proposed fees with the 50% cap, and that includes the school impact fee rates as well, the proposed new rates. So you can see, like, single-family, the small tier, 750 to 1,000 is right now 8,500, and the cap would go to, only to 8,800. The second, maybe 2, 1,700 and so on, is right now is about 12,000, it would go to 18,000. And that increase, like Nicole mentioned, has to be done over four years, so it will not be immediately in effect. The first year, it would go from 12,000 to 14,000 and so on, reaching the 18, if adopted, at year four.
Can we pause here a second? So the, on the single-family, 750 to 1,000, we're doubling the impact fee for affordable housing areas?
750 to 1,000 is actually, it's only going... No, no.
81% increase?
Eight, that's the calculated fee, that's not the capped fee. And that, so unless, so that won't be going into effect. It will be the cap fee, the maximum rate fee. Do you see it two columns after?
So it'll then...
So there's really not much change in that category. It stays almost the same.
So then why do we have the calculated impact fee column at all? Why is it relevant?
Just to show that maximum, actual full cost of that category is that 15,000, but because of the limit on the 50% increase, it will be mitigated, that increase. So the study calculates 15...
50% increase, but you could increase it over time. Aren't you doing it incrementally over time?
Yes. But not to 15,000, just to 8,800. Yeah. So like, the last four slides kind of show you...
Ms. Knapp, so what is the calculated impact fee? Why is that column there?
So it shows the stud, the results of the study are showing you 100% of what the proportionate share should be. The Board's direction was to, by Florida statute, not increase them above 50%, incrementally increased over four years. So we're only going to increase 12, 12 and a half percent over four years if adopted. So the max we'll get to is 50, and we will stay at that 50% unless we bring another study forward. But they have to show the calculated, which is the 100% of the proportionate share for the burden to the infrastructure.
All right. We're going to have questions as we go, because to wait three hours to ask these questions is going to overload my brain. So if we have questions on this stuff, you know, chime in so that we can ask these as we go ahead.
And so the essence of your statement is because you've been directed to get 50% and no greater, because it puts you in a different category of communication, you're showing us what it really costs when you put that home in there. And what happens is the burden of those costs that are distributed to everybody else to invite them into our community, right?
Correct.
So ultimately, we're saying it costs us $8,000 to have them move here, and the impact of that is that everybody else shares the remaining differential of 5,000. You're increasing to the 8,000, you're not charging them. Correct?
Correct. So the full, right, full burden is about 15,000, and we will be collecting, if this adopted, county will collect about 8,900 from new development, so the rest.
I think what you have not communicated very clearly, and I think that's why the question arises, is it really, every time you, every time we, the community, approve more housing, everybody in the community says, I'm going to pay $5,000 to have you move into the county, add to traffic, police, crime, and everything else, right? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
But you didn't say it quite that way. I said it that way.
Are you sure that's what you're saying?
Right. And that, that 8,900, I can't see it from here exactly.
The 8,54, the 8,84?
At the conclusion of the onset, or at the start of the fourth year, that won't be the first year, right?
Right. So it's even greater delta of cost to invite people to our community, add to our roads, add to police protection, fire protection, and all that cost. We invite them here and agree to pay for them to come. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, I guess I'm asking this question because I can see the public out there looking at this and saying, wait a minute, you know, why is it 15,4, and you're only charging the developer 8,85? I haven't, I haven't heard an explanation that makes sense to me, much less is going to make sense to someone sitting in the audience. But we're not going to drill into this too much because we'd be here for four or five days. You may want to think about that between now and the board meeting.
Mr. Chair? I don't know if this is on, I can't...
It is now.
I'm sorry. I just want to clarify that the Florida Statute, Section 163 31801, governing the impact fee, says that the impact fee increase should be 50% of the current impact fee rate.
Unless you vote on it.
Period. And the other part of it hasn't been construed by the courts, is what, you have to show extraordinary circumstances. The courts haven't construed that. So the county would risk a lawsuit if we did this extraordinary circumstances stuff, and have to refund all the money later on.
Okay, but...
So we're not going that route, and the Board... So we're not going that route, and the board made a policy decision to 50%.
Okay, but the...
And this board's role, if I may say, is only to review this for consistency with the plan, not to debate the amount of the fee. We're not county commissioners up here, plan commission members.
I just want to understand what I'm voting for.
So I just want to say, 50% is a given, and we can't change that.
Well, I can talk about most anything I want to.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's not the role of the plan commission, we're just voting for consistency with the plan, not determining the amount of the fee, unless you want it for county commission.
So the county, the county certainly could increase 50% this year, and then two years from now, another 50%. I mean, it's not 50% cap for the rest of time, until Galactic Empire comes and takes us over.
Well, Nicole can clarify if she wants.
You can't increase 50% this year, and you can, you can't increase your fees more than once every four years, like incrementally, so...
So what's the plan to get to the 15, what's the plan to get to the total cost?
There isn't one, the direction from the board is to cap at 50%.
Fine, that's what I wanted to hear. So we, the people in the audience are going to say, "So you're telling me the cost is this, and there's no plan to get there."
The board has made the policy decision to find another funding source to offset the impact fees.
Good enough, I just...
They get property tax increases and stuff like that on the side, so there is...
A member of the public's going to look at that and raise their hand and say...
There is other ways of generating tax money, that new development.
Yes, that, that's true, there's other ways to, for, okay. Thank you. Please continue.
If you dare. Sorry, just, I was thinking about this.
Look, our job is to ask these questions, because, you know, a few weeks from now, the board hearing, it's entirely likely that we, the people, are going to be up asking these questions somebody.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Okay, so we'll start with public safety. The inventory includes the EMS stations and any additional buildings used by the public safety department to provide their services. It's a total of almost 200,000 square feet and 50 acres of land, as well as vehicles and equipment. In each of the, for each of the service areas, building costs are estimated based on any construction the county has made recently, or any bids, any insurance values of the existing buildings, data from other jurisdictions, and so forth. And then the land values is again based on any recent purchases, upcoming purchases, vacant land sales throughout the county for similar-sized parcels, and also location.
So where, so where did we come up with $160,000 an acre?
That was again based on the, the type of land that county is likely to buy for EMS facilities.
So if the county is taking right-of-way, or is getting right-of-way on projects, it's now worth $160,000 an acre?
This is again just buying the parcel.
Check your head rate, you know what I'm thinking, the county's established $160,000 an acre is the value of land.
No, this is for EMS-type facilities, so these are small parcels located at, you know, the type, where they are likely to build their future EMS facility, so it's not...
Continue.
For purposes of impact fees, we measure the level of service in terms of population per station, so the county-owned stations are handling about 70,000 people. They, the overall, the county has 18 stations, but most of them are leased, so they are not included in the impact fee calculation, only the owned stations are included.
Say that one more time for me, please?
Yes, so county leases 12 out of the 18 stations, or does not own them, so they are not included, they are considered operational expense, they are not capital-owned capitals, so we only include...
So there are, what, half the locations that are not calculated in the impact fee?
The build, yeah, the building value is not included, because they are just renting or leasing.
Didn't put that in your study.
Because they are not considered capital items, capital assets, they are operational expense. So we can only charge new development for the capital investment that the community made up to this point, so...
Okay.
You can build buildings, but you can't hire people.
Right, correct, we can't pay for salaries, we can't pay...
But the cost to have somebody move into our county is not mitigated by the operational expense by impact fees.
I mean, impact fees don't include any of the operational expenses.
As I just said that, I agree, but...
Yeah, and your full cost of someone moving in includes those expenses as well, but impact fees are only dealing with the capital portion of the...
And all I'm trying to say is, as a point of clarity, when I look at what you say is the value of land, which I'd buy all the land you can find me at that price, and, and the cost of building at $325 a foot, which I don't believe you could build a fire station for that, I would stand to be corrected, and then how you calculate what is a part of that, I just want, I want to be able to say, "We asked you about what it really costs to bring somebody in, and what we're really recovering, and the number is not even 50%. I would argue it may be 25% of what we really cost." But that's, that's why I'm here. Sorry, go ahead.
So the total asset value with buildings, land, vehicles amounts to about 100 million, and that divided by population gives us a cost of $230 per resident. So that sort of represents the investment the community made up to this point into public safety infrastructure, and that's our starting point to charge new development. The county is using other revenue sources to also build these facilities, so that generates about $2.50 credit on an annual basis per resident.
How long will the, go back one? How long will the American Rescue Plan Act continue to fund?
I think that will probably end after the next CIP period.
I'm getting yelled at. How long will, I'm, I'm sorry, the American Rescue Plan Act, when will it sunset?
I, I'm not exactly sure, but I think it, it's in the, through the next CIP period it's being used, so that's the period we look at, 10-year period.
That's, that's half of what's on that sheet, comes from the FADs, right? Which could go away.
Right, yeah, on average. So then, the total cost, and then minus that credit, ends up being about net cost of $187 per person. And that multiplied by residents per unit of each land use gives us the final calculated fee. So you can see, like, for a single-family, it's about $325, and that's a pretty moderate increase. And then the, some of the land uses, because of changes to the demand component, increase more than 50%, like retail here, so that would get capped at $200 instead of 485, that's the last row. But otherwise, for the most part, it's, it's pretty moderate. And this, these are again example land uses, your full fee schedule has more land uses that we showed earlier. And then this slide shows comparison to what other jurisdictions adopted for EMS or public safety impact fees, and this group range is anywhere from, for a single-family home, anywhere from $55 to about $390 or so.
If, it might be easier...
Also, sorry, go ahead.
It might be easier before the board, if you were to reformat this, so it, manatee's on the left, and then it either goes to the lowest, go from lowest to highest, or highest to lowest, so you're not trying to look at these things, but go, here's how it is.
And the other thing we wanted to show here was that we put the study date of these rates, so like, you can kind of tell how old their data is, and then the assessed portion, which is the policy decision, if they adopted a reduced percentage, you know, you can tell.
So a lot of these counties are going to likely, their, their timeframe's coming up to increase their impact fees as well?
Correct.
Okay, so they may catch up to where we are, because we're going to be one of the higher ones on this list, correct?
Yes.
And maybe they'll start catching up, I mean, who's in, Pasco's 2003? Wow, okay, all right, thank you.
Law enforcement, the inventory includes about 325,000 total square feet and 35 acres of land and vehicles and equipment, and building cost is estimated at $400 per square foot, and land at 150,000 per acre. In terms of level of service, it's measured by officers per thousand population, so that's right around 1.8. And the total asset value here is about 174 million almost, and that, or 170 million, that divided by the population gives us a value of $550 per person, again measuring the investment the community has made up to this point into law enforcement infrastructure. Yes, sir?
The population based on full-time residents, rentals, ownership, how's that calculated?
Population, what we call is a functional population, it looks at residents, visitors, seasonal residents, as well as people coming in and out of the community throughout the day for work or other purposes. So it tries to capture everybody on a, on a full-time equivalent basis, I'm sorry?
Hotel occupancy is considered in there?
Yes.
So that drives down the cost per unit by adding people that come in and stay and...
Yeah, we try to, yeah, we try to include everybody that law enforcement is likely to serve, because if they are here, they will have to serve them, and that gets into account when they are planning facilities, because they feel the pressure.
So it doesn't include like five-year-olds, because law enforcement's probably not going to have, so that's why you say functional, it doesn't include a segment of population that the law enforcement probably is not going to have to deal with?
It includes everyone, but if they are here half the year, we only include them as half-person per se, throughout the year. And if they are only here during the day, certain hours, we take that into account. And similarly, if some people are leaving the county, you know, we try to take that into account as well.
All right.
The county is using sales tax for, to build some of the facilities, so that generates a credit of $4.80 per resident on an annual basis. And then there's also outstanding debt service for a capacity project built with bond proceeds, and that has a credit of about $17. So the total cost, less the credit, ends up being about $450 per person of net cost. That, that again multiplied by the residents per unit gives us the final fee, and here is, the law enforcement is about $800 for single-family home. And this slide provides a comparison to some of the other jurisdictions, so this group is ranging from 280 to about 573. And, yeah, okay. Libraries.
Sorry.
There, six libraries are in, in the inventory, collections and materials, and the building cost is estimated at $450 per square foot, land value at 150,000 per acre. And the level of service is measured in terms of square footage of buildings per population, and the materials per population. So the total asset value is about 83 million, that again results in a value per resident of $180, reflecting the investment. There are some other revenue sources being used for facilities, so that generates a credit of about $1.60 per year, per resident.
One second, so this, can you go back to that last slide? So this population is calculated at 453,000, the last one is 318,000. And so why?
So the libraries are charged only to residential land uses, and then we...
That would make it in reverse, it would be less, because that's less than people that you described under the police service.
No, the full fee is charged to just the residential, with the idea that really the use from non-residential land users is not really...
The population number, not the amount of...
Right, the population...
So you said 315 use police services, you say 453,000 use library services.
Right, libraries are not necessarily, well, at least we don't have good data that they are used by commercial land users, so we just use the countywide seasonal and full-time residents. We don't get the employees involved in that, people leaving in and out of the community, and also the service areas...
It doesn't make sense.
Yeah. See, I got to, that didn't make sense to me earlier, but some of these things, if I may interject, quite frankly, we're not going to make any decisions here, this is going to the board.
I agree.
So some of these things, we might be following what Ms. Schenk said earlier, we might be getting in the weeds a little too much, so I want to make sure that we don't do that. But on big-picture things like, yeah, I didn't understand the population thing either, especially when I see the entire population for libraries, but not the entire population for sheriffs, and...
Because law, law enforcement is provided primarily in unincorporated counties, so it's not taking the whole county, libraries is countywide, so that's one big difference.
One last, one last question.
Sure.
How many other counties have you done this for with this model of underwriting?
Oh, hundreds.
Hundreds?
Yes.
They all use this model?
Yes.
Okay.
No comment, thank you.
And then there is also debt service related to libraries, so that generates a credit, and then the net cost after the credits is about $143. As I mentioned, this fees are charged only to residential land users, so we just multiply by residents per unit, there's no adjustment for workers. So the fees, calculated fees range, for single-family range from $204 to $363, and for multifamily, $177 to $255. And then you can see that these increases are above the 50% limit, so the, with the 50% limit, the fee would be from 160 to 363 for single-family, and about 160 to 255 for multifamily. And then this chart provides a comparison of the current fee, calculated fee, and the fees by other jurisdictions, so this group, their fees range from $145 to $680 for single-family homes. Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation is also only charged to residential land uses. We, it, the inventory includes about almost 3,400 acres of land, and that results in a level of service of 7.5 acres per thousand residents. So the total asset value with the parkland and recreational facility value is about 676, 77 million, that divided by population gives us the value per resident of almost $1,500, again representing the investment. There are other revenue sources also being...
So, big-picture question, go back. One more. If the county is providing parks and rec for the entire population of the county, that means that the five municipalities are not providing any parks and rec, because the county's doing it all, for everybody. So is the county then charging those municipalities for providing parks and rec for their residents? Much like if the county were providing sheriffs for the city of Bradenton, there would be some sort of a fee involved. That's probably not an answer I'm going to get now, but I'm just wondering, the county's providing services for everybody, what is the city of Bradenton doing for parks and rec?
So typically, cities have, may have their own, typically have their own park system as well, but this is the county park system that's open to everyone in the county, and the type of facilities are likely to attract anyone in the county, whether their own city has a park or not.
All right, fine.
So, okay, we had the credits, and then there's a debt service related to parks as well, so the net fee after the credits is about 1,300. And that multiplied by residents per unit gives us the final fee. Again, this is charged only to residential land users, and you can see the increases were above 50%, so they got capped at, for a single-family, it's anywhere from 726 to 1,900, and multifamily is about 726 to 1,100.
And parks and rec is more expensive than law enforcement?
Yes, based on, law enforcement tends to be very operationally-heavy, they, their capital doesn't tend to be as much.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then this chart shows a comparison to other jurisdictions, and again, in this group, the fees for single-family ranges from anywhere from 300 to about 3,600. Transportation, that's calculated a little differently, so I just wanted to show you the formula. We start with the cost of building a road, or one lane miles at 5.6 million, so that basically says if you are building one mile of road with two lanes, it's about 11 million. That carries about 12,700-person capacity, so that 5.6 divided by that gives us a cost of $440 per person miles of capacity. So that basically says... So that basically says every time we add a person to the roadways, for them to travel a mile, it costs the infrastructure about $440. That's just kind of a unit cost. Average home generates 33 person miles of daily travel. So those two multiply gives us the total cost, which is at about 14,000. And then we subtract the credit. And then the net cost would be about 12,300.
Is the 33 person miles of daily travel a specific analysis from Manatee County? Or is it based on some national, regional number?
Actually, I'm going to show you that.
Okay.
The variables. So the man component that you just asked has three variables, like number of trips each land use generates per day, how long those trips are, and how many of them are new trips. So if somebody is going from home to office and they stop at a gas station, we don't charge that gas station because that trip was already going to the office, wasn't generated because of the gas station. The data for that trip generation data comes from a combination of Institute of Transportation engineers. That's a national database. And then we do have Florida Studies database. Those are studies conducted in front of the establishments, really counting the cars, asking people where they're coming, where they're going, how long their trips are and so on, as well as the travel demand model. So they are not county-specific to answer your questions. They are as close as we can get to the Florida numbers. Cost component, we review any local improvements and determine that, like, there were about 13 projects. They were about 1.8 to 6.4 million, averaged above 3.95 million. We then, at one point, because we started the study way back 2018 or so, and then after the pandemic, we had a refreshing, just because costs increased so much. The county asked that we re-look at that. So during that time period, you know, when you look at the indices, the cost increases were anywhere from 19% to 54% on construction. So the average was 38%. We apply that to the cost figure.
And these transportation numbers include the required stormwater systems for the roads, as well as sidewalks and any handrails and those kind of things. But it probably doesn't obviously include any utilities that were in that, within that right of way. But it's asphalt, stormwater ponds, reinforced concrete type.
Everything other than utilities, because they are paid with utility rates, that the county uses to construct their roads, that's in their projects. And this is still, so far, we're only talking about construction component. This, again, just to show you the trends in constructions, you know, we had that '04, '05, '06 boom. And then we had the Great Recession. And then the costs were increasing. And that increase sort of heightened after the pandemic, got a lot sharper. So overall, this is for county roads. The cost is 3.9 million. And then we add to that design right of way and CEI. And those percentages are based on projects that county built. So the overall cost ends up being 5.6 million. On the credit side, again, we look at all funding. We are char-
Is that kind of fast? Nope, go forward, one. One more.
One more? Oh, I'm going the wrong way?
Yeah, go forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right there. Go back one. What's in between there?
It's a gap, Popo.
Oh, there's a gap?
There's a mystery slide in between there. Did you see that? Go forward. That one.
Oh, that's just a picture.
There, yes. Well, one's on gas tax, right? So we talk about this. Now, it's probably not a thing here, but electric cars, gas taxes go to zero. How are electric cars going to pay for it? And I know that's not a thing now, but that's something that we, the people, need to start figuring out.
Yes.
Probably not for something here.
I think, I think we have a slide on that. Not exactly what, but yeah, making the same point that it's actually not a very productive revenue source. Okay, so we review again all revenue funding sources for transportation. Overall, there's about 39 million per year is being allocated to transportation capacity. And a larger portion is from state investment. County has more limited, and then obviously cities don't. So this is where we wanted to mention almost, I think, the similar point that you made. You know, transportation's dedicated revenue source is fuel tax. But as you know, it's per gallon basis. And in Florida, state taxes are indexed, but local tax are not allowed to be indexed. And all other revenue sources, sales tax, adware tax, are automatically indexed because they are a percentage of the price, not per gallon. So what we are seeing is between inability to index and the fuel efficiency, a local penny mid-90s is worth half its value now. State is losing some ground too, but not as much. So we are getting into a situation where, you know, our costs are increasing, but our dedicated revenue source is declining. So it's not a very efficient revenue source. And that's one of the issues why we always are talking about how to fund transportation. So overall, the calculated fee, these are again example land uses for single-family is about 12,000. This is 2,000 square foot home. Adopted fee is about 4,000. So that triggers the cap. With the cap is 6,000. The 12,000 goes down to 6,000. Multifamily 5,500 to 3,500 and so on. And then this slide shows some of the comparisons. And we have another one. The other change here is, right now, the county has four different fees. And this study moves it into a single fee countywide instead of varying the fees. And then, so as far as the comparables, we have two counties here, there's Volusia and Hillsboro. They are charging anywhere from 5,400 to 13,000 for single-family. And then in this, this group is anywhere from 2,000 to about 10,000 or so. Let me see if I have one more. And then this final one is from 1,900 to 15,000.
May I ask one other question? Is there any allocation for bridge replacements? Because, you know, one of the things is you have them by area. Bridge replacement to get on the islands is something significant. And is that transportation or not?
This one is only for capacity projects addition. So it can't be replacement. It can't be resurfacing. So it's only when we are adding a lane, improving intersection, you know, building-
So even if you add density on the island, you don't have bridge money?
If it's just a replacement, no. I mean, only thing it does is by taking care of capacity project, it frees up other dollars for that bridge replacement. But, yeah.
If they allocate it there.
Correct.
Where's our school tax again?
But 64 and 64, Manatee anyways is a state. And so is Cortez, right? Those are both state, yeah. So we wouldn't, we're not on the huck for those anyways. Maybe we're donating some money to it, I don't know. But what we do have to worry about though is a longboat bridge.
Well, I know about the stuff to Palmetto because I'm involved up there. So I, curiosity, forgive me my digression.
No, absolutely. So again, this is the slide from the beginning that shows you the total fees. But it's really, this is probably more relevant now with the cap. And again, this slide, just some example land uses. So the smaller, single-family, 750 to 1,000 would stay about the same with the cap. Single-family 1,700 or more would increase from 12,500 to 18,600 over four years. And then a small multifamily would go up from 5,900 to 8,800 and so on.
I see you noted, you note educational facilities impact fee rates. I didn't see a slide about that. I know Mr. Penley's here.
They will have a separate presentation.
Good, okay, all right.
But we did, this slide did incorporate what's in the latest adopted ordinance with their phasing, just so you can see the total fees.
Okay.
Chairman, there, item number five this morning. They're a separate item. The school district is a separate item this morning.
Right. I mean, it was here and we haven't talked about it yet.
Yeah.
But we are going to talk about it.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Nicole.
Thank you. You did a great job in spite of me being mean and spirited and grumpy and incorrigible. So thank you.
I just wanted to get up to go over some of our next steps. The next steps, and this speaks to items two, three, four, and five, even though we're only talking about item number two right now, is to let you know that all those items today are here before the Planning Commission for consistency findings with the code and the comp plan. Then they will move forward to next Thursday, June 6, in front of the board. Again, all items two, three, four, and five. For the school district, that will be their adoption hearing whereby for items two, three, and four, it is either their first of two hearings or their transmittal hearing. We do have a plan amendment that's coming up next, item number three. And that has to be transmitted to the state. The other thing I wanted to point out is that if, assuming these fees are adopted by the board next, on June 6, at the first hearing, excuse me, the second hearing will be August 8, then they would become effective. The board has also made directive to staff that they would like the impact fees to be effective January 1. Whereas you're going to hear from the school district, their fees will become effective September 9. So in conclusion, staff's recommendation for item number two, which is the Land Development Code text amendment regarding setting new impact fee study and a fee schedule found to be consistent with, there's approximately seven or eight goals that are listed in the back of the staff report. Seven or eight goals and policies that they be found to be consistent with the comp plan. And based off the impact study, the new fees are fair, reasonable, and roughly proportionate to capital needs generated by the new development for which such fees shall be levied. And that fees do not exceed the cost. The county cannot exceed the cost, but they can set the policy to set those fees less. And so those fees do not exceed the costs incurred by the county to accommodate the new development that will pay the fees. And then lastly, staff also recommends approval of the proposed text amendments to the Land Development Code contained in Exhibits A and B in your ordinance, which recognizes the new study and fees. And this concludes our report on the Land Development Code text amendments.
Thank you. I have a simple question on the ordinance itself. When it gets into definitions, and I just noticed this. So I know this is getting into the weeds, if you will, or trees. Tree shall mean any self-supporting woody plant. So a palm is not a tree.
I missed the question, I'm sorry, because I stepped away to get my-
So there's a definition here of what a tree is. So a palm is not a tree, which I realize it's actually a plant. But I didn't know in our tree replacement, maybe Ms. Greer, this is a separate issue. I didn't know that maybe we don't replace palms when we tear them down. Or do we? Okay, well, it's defined, according to the definition, then a palm is not a tree.
Can you tell me what page you're?
It's, don't worry about it, Nicole. Don't worry.
Because it's not related to impact fees.
This is, yeah, well, it's in the ordinance.
But, but we're proposing to change that.
I just saw it in the ordinance because I actually read this. I know, it's like horrible. And then-
But, okay, so we're not proposing a definition. We're showing, when we propose definition amendments, we show the definition before and after, just so it's easier for text amendment purposes. But it's not subject to this text amendment.
Right.
We need to take it out.
It just looked, anyway.
Gotcha.
It's not that important. Also, on the very last page of the ordinance, page 25 of 25, non-residential land uses are assessed per 1,000. You probably just need to put 1,000 square feet. So that's just a little reverberant.
Thank you. Yep, noted, okay.
That's all I have on that one. I read it. Can you imagine that? That was painful. All right, anything else for staff? All right, we will open public comment portion. We will open public comment portion. Is anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak about this issue? Anyone in the public? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public comment portion. Questions from planning commissioners?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge.
First of all, I find the, he just got kicked. I find the whole standard by which we kind of assess this is frustrating to me because, because you've done it with hundreds of other communities, doesn't make it right for us. And then I have the same problem with the traffic analysis. Well, they say, well, they only go this far. But they don't have our population base. They don't have our traffic. We don't have our invitees that no one has track of. And so I find this whole thing a little, I'd say comical if it wasn't about the money. Because you just make up the standard, then you match the standard, then you only increase it 50%. And I don't think anybody realizes what the real cost is. I don't think you know what the real cost is. I mean, you use these standards and say, well, it's based on this and that. And I find that hugely frustrating and don't find any other units of business that are allowed to do it that way. Well, somebody else said the cost is 300. I bet you couldn't build a fire station for $300 a foot if you begged people. And so I find this all kind of a unsatisfying reason to raise taxes without knowing what the real cost is. And so I'm frustrated by it. I don't care for it. I understand we can only do certain things because the state says that, 50%. So we're going to get 100, we're going to get 50% of whatever the imaginary number is, which I think is substantially lower. But I just can't, I understand my role is not to do that. But as a member of the paying public, I find this hugely frustrating. I just, I just can't, that we run the business like this of guesstimating prices. And if you can show me land at 160,000 an acre around Manatee County, I want it. But, but that's not my job. So I'm glad to sit here and hear you explain it to me, so.
Take it upstairs.
Unless somebody else, yeah, somebody gets voted on this stuff.
All right, any other comments? Any closing comments from staff? Okay, Chair Lintana, motion then. Motion by Mr. DeLizel. Second by Mr. Bedford. We may chew, we may vote, we may vote now. Ever wonder why technology takes so long? You would think that these things would be like-
Like we could raise our hand.
We, no kidding. I was faster 20 years ago when I did it all by voice. Ah, there we go. So the motion approved is approved five to two with Mr. Rutledge, who I believe has already voiced his issues, and Ms. Prosser. Ms. Prosser, for the record, anything you'd like to add?
I was right along with, with Mr. Rutledge with, the presentation to me was frustrating and actually a bit confusing to me. So, for that reason.
Thank you. Items number three and four, we're going to open them together. Ms. Greer, would you please read item three and four into the record for us?
Item number three, ordinance 2444, PA 2404, county-initiated comprehensive plan text amendment, concurrency alternative transportation system. Amending the comprehensive plan, providing a county-initiated text amendment to element two, future land use, element five, transportation, traffic, and aviation sub-elements, and element 10, excuse me, capital improvements to delete reference to transportation concurrency and replace with an alternate multimodal transportation funding system and adding a reference to a multimodal transportation impact fee. Item number four, ordinance 2466, LDCT 2405, county-initiated Land Development Code text amendment, concurrency alternate, alternative transportation system, amending chapter three of the Land Development Code, three of the Land Development Code, deleting the references to optional transportation concurrency, replacing with an alter, alternative multimodal transportation funding system, amending development plan application requirements, providing an additional factor in section 342.4.A16 for transportation impact review, reviewing a new section 343 regarding transportation impact review, providing the exemptions and transportation impact review requirements within section 343 of the code, and deleting section 360.10 of the code regarding roadway level and service review process.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Good morning, Mr. Davis.
Good morning, sir. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Clark Davis. I'm Deputy Director of Public Works. I'm here to talk about the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code amendments related to an alternative transportation system. Before I get into my short presentation, I'll talk a little bit about why we're here. In April of 2023, the board directed staff to go forward with some impact fee amendments and to adopt what, at the time, we were calling a mobility fee. Mobility fees, a Florida mobility fee, at the time, in simplest forms, was to rescind your transportation concurrency requirement and to consider your transportation impact fee or road impact fee to satisfy the mitigation requirements of the development. So it became, that's the mobility fee part of it. And so, in this case, if this is approved, the multimodal transportation impact fee that you just heard about in the other ordinance would become the fee under the alternative transportation system. The reason we feel the board was receptive to the proposal to move forward with a mobility fee and is that transportation concurrency since 2011, with the passage of the Community Planning Act, has become increasingly inefficient. There are some traffic studies that we need. At the time you see a comp plan amendment, you want to do what I would say is a check to make sure that your long-range plan is still valid and to make sure that your short-range capital program projects are right. And similarly, at zoning, you want to do the same sort of short-range test. But past that point, you move into the world of concurrency, and if you think about it long enough, concurrency studies are, can be and frequently are, time-consuming and expensive studies. They take private resources, they take public resources, and you end up with one of two results. The study shows that the developer doesn't need to make any improvement, so you've done a study just to say that nothing else needs to be done. The other option is that you end up with some mitigation that's required. Some turn lanes have to be built, a road needs to be widened, something like that. But since the Community Planning Act, when that happens, the developer is only required to pay their proportionate share, and they can either pay that in cash and go, or they could aggregate those proportionate shares and funnel them to a particular improvement or group of improvements, and then also go. But in either case, they get an impact fee credit for that later. In other words, they've done all this work to come up with a fee amount that, or a payment that's really just a portion of an impact fee they're going to pay anyway. So why not just skip all of the in-between stuff and have them pay an impact fee, or in this case, a mobility fee, or alternative transportation system fee? And so that's why we're here. Now, how we do it is the presentation, and so there are two requests before you today. The first is a comprehensive plan amendment that sets the policy for this system. By way of explanation, we're calling it an alternative transportation system now, because during this legislative session, the legislature more tightly defined a mobility fee, and our version of mobility fee doesn't quite fit that definition, but we can still implement it as an alternative transportation system. And so that's the reason for the label change, but it still is carrying out the intent of the board's direction. And anyway, the idea here in the comp plan is to amend policy related to transportation concurrency and set the table for implementing the alternative transportation system fee. And then in the Land Development Code, we need an amendment to also eliminate references to transportation concurrency, but to retain the portions of traffic studies that you still need for the comp plan amendments and zoning amendments I talked about a moment ago. And so, in the comprehensive plan amendment, you have land use policy. We delete traffic and mass transit as subject to the transportation concurrency requirement. That comes from a land use policy, and we delete references to a transportation concurrency exception area, because without transportation concurrency, there won't be exceptions to it either, and so it just doesn't make sense for it to be there. And we amend transportation policy, again, primarily to unhook it from transportation concurrency. That's where the large policy cluster was for exception areas. It's also where some of the review processes at policy level were retained, and they're now being backed up to the land use and zoning level only and eliminating references to concurrency. And then finally, there were a couple of things in the capital improvement element where, in discussion of impact fees and scheduling of projects, the comp plan, way to paraphrase it would be, it sees development's role in implementing needed capacity improvements. And so there's some things that were implied to be concurrency that needed to be revised there to make them, sort of unhook them again from the concurrency requirements. Then in the code, the code, first of all, to be passed at all, needs the comprehensive plan amendment that we just talked about. There are a couple of definition changes and a provision in the impact fee chapter that Nicole presented that this amendment relies on. Without that ordinance also being passed, it's sort of implicit, so it's nice if both ordinances get passed to implement the alternative transportation system fee. But the idea there was to update some definitions, recognize multimodal transportation impact fee as the alternative transportation fee system. So there won't be two different fees. You either have a road impact fee, or you've got this alternate fee, and we're transitioning so that we have just the alternate fee. And then we amend development review regulations. Previously, we had a fairly prescriptive subsection of our concurrency code that talked about how you do traffic studies. This has been lifted and moved into the site planning processes and tailored to focus on what you do at the time of a future land use map amendment proposal or a zoning atlas amendment proposal, the kinds of things that you could frequently see here at a planning commission level, and then remove the portion that relates to concurrency, and that prompted some changes to our certificate of level of service compliance regulations as well. Certificate of level of service compliance, you hear it called a CLOS, that is, the document, the development order, that makes your, not just transportation, all concurrency findings. And so it needed to be revised to eliminate references to transportation as well. So the effects of the amendment is create an alternative transportation system, repeal transportation concurrency, establish that the multimodal transportation impact fee, the one you just heard about, will serve as the ATS fee. And then what happens is it modifies transportation review processes, and I'll cover that a little bit more in a second, ensures new development continues to pay its share of external transportation impacts by paying its, the fee that we're talking about. And in, an outcome of that is it will increase efficiency and predictability for review processes, both for the public and private sector. And so, because it can affect what you see here when you're making recommendations to the board, I thought it might be helpful to talk a little bit about what it means for review processes. And first, you need to understand the types of studies you see. So you'll hear your transportation planning staff come before you and talk about either a traffic impact statement that was done for a project or a traffic impact analysis. And the traffic impact statement is a generalized study. It looks at how many new trips a development's going to generate, where they go in the road network. For the part of the network that's significantly impacted by those trips, they just add up the trips on the road segment. So if there's 1,000 cars out there today, the development adds 200 more, and so on, and they build it up. And they compare that to values in a lookup table, so it, as the name applies, it's generalized. It's just a sort of rough guess. It's a proximity alarm, you know, your truck gets too close to the loading dock, it starts beeping, and so this is, this is what happens with generalized level of service. It's not perfect, but it gives you a rough idea of how close you are to capacity. And so it gives you a level of service barometer, if you will, as to whether or not the road network is functioning, and if you do that for a comp plan amendment or rezoning, for a short-range and long-range test, you get a rough idea of whether your plan is still good. And so that's the purpose of that study. And these types of studies, you'll continue to see at planning commission level. What's changing is the traffic impact analysis. Occasionally, a developer will elect to go ahead and do their concurrency study before they come before you, and they will do a detailed traffic analysis. Large projects with a GDP and just about any project with a preliminary site plan is eligible for this. They don't all do it, but sometimes they'll do a detailed study and you'll get that information. And they do all the things you do in a traffic impact statement, but then they go out and they actually do detailed data collection at several intersections, and they do detailed analysis through several scenarios at those intersections. And so they get a much closer approximation of what the capacity of the roads are and where the failures are, what types of improvements, turn lanes or additional roadway lanes you might need to make the roads work better. And then coming out of that for concurrency purposes, they identify the one, the portion of that mitigation that belongs to that development and the portion of that improvement that belongs to that development. So, going forward, what we think you'll see, and it's the way it's laid out in code, is the traffic impact statements will still be used for land use amendments. There'll be a review of short and long-range conditions for your zoning atlas amendments or rezonings. You'll continue to see a review of short-range scenarios, but at site plan review, which may or may not have come to you in the past, but definitely gets seen at an administrative level by staff eventually, what was previously either a TIS for little projects or a TIA for larger projects will now be limited to a trip generation and assignment report. So we still want to know how many trips they generate and where they go, because staff wants to add those to a big database so we can look at the whole county at once and then use that information to make good, hopefully good decisions about where we're going to expend capital dollars, you know, where we're going to, as a county, make the next improvements. And then downstream of what the planning commission and the board normally see, a final site plan review, will still continue with what is sometimes called access review or site-related review or operational and safety analysis, so that we'll still be looking at where connection points occur at driveways and new subdivision roads to make sure that the right turn lanes are there, and to make sure that their sidewalk system is properly connected to their surrounding system and that all of the multimodal and access stuff is safe and well-designed. And so those parts will continue. And so, again, to summarize what's going on, that generalized studies for land use and zoning amendments will stay pretty much the way they are today. Site-related review at final site plan stage will stay, but the concurrency studies will be replaced. Transportation concurrency won't be a thing, and it'll be these trip generation and assignment reports. And small projects won't see much difference, because there wasn't a whole lot of study to do there in the first place. Medium and large projects will have reduced upfront preparation and county transportation review time. This is where a lot of time, energy, and money was expended on both sides to not get much more than occasionally a prepayment of an impact fee. And so that covers the amendment and the way we think it will work going forward. Can take any questions. I also have Damian Miller from Van Esch here to help with some of the technical questions, if you have him, and Nelson Galeano from Transportation Planning.
Thank you. So this is for items three and four.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, briefly, let's just open up the public comment portion. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and discuss this item? Anyone in the public to discuss this item? We'll close the public comment for. So questions, comments, commissioners? Mr. Rutledge?
I think this is a good idea.
Yes, I think it makes sense. Transportation concurrency has kind of outlived its usefulness at this time. In 2011, with the ability to no longer use transportation concurrency findings to govern the timing of projects, it just transitioned to a pay-and-go system. It just lost a lot of its value. I think at the time, we still had a lot of legacy projects under old approvals and some things that were in process, and so for a long time, didn't make sense to make the transition, because we were there, but most of that stuff's been flushed out of the system, and the stuff we see today is almost all pay-and-go. And if you're going to just pay-and-go, why not just pay-and-go and skip the study?
Mr. Galeano, is he in agreement with this? You like this?
Yes.
I mean, you're the experts. I'm a humble servant.
Nelson Galeano, Transportation Planning, I have been-
How do I come?
Yes, we agree. This is a good idea. The main purpose is to expedite the process and really to be more effective in terms of identification of the impacts related to the new projects on the roadway network. Of course, in the details, we need to go into the details, how to implement it, and see how will be the final result of this new proposal.
Okay.
From my experience, and I do this for a living, the whole transportation world is like black box voodoo medicine to me. I mean, I understand concrete pipes and a lot of that stuff, but we retain what we think are the best transportation engineers, Christopher Hatton and Becca Bond, who Ms. Bond is actually here today. And, you know, they deal with staff on this stuff, and when they start talking about that, I just like go get a cup of coffee, because this stuff is like, you know, the TIS reveals, TIA and ABC, and these trips are going here, and I just go, whatever you tell me to do. So, you know, it's just, I just have to applaud these guys and those guys for sorting this stuff out, because it just goes right over my head.
And I have a lot of comments in our staff, so if you guys tell me, and if maybe the women tell me too, but if that's the best choice for us, I'm not going to argue that. And so I'm going to depend on you. And then if it gets to be a mess, we'll say, hey, your fault. All right, thanks.
Now, I do have some comments on the ordinance itself, down in the weeds just a tad, just to clean up some things, I think, and ask some questions. On page 10, and then on page 11, we say future land use plan amendments and zoning amendments, and the next page, we say future land use amendments or zoning amendments. I'm not sure if it's and and/or or and/or, so we could probably clean that up. I read this. Can you believe it? Nicole's down there going like, man, I can't believe it. This is- Page 12, under A, review should probably be capitalized. On page 13, dedication where required shall occur on or before issuance of a final site plan approval, final plat or building permit. Is that like the most, the earliest of those? Because usually I get my final site plan first, so, or can staff decide when I get my, when the dedication is required? I don't know. Again, this might be in the weeds, but dedication where required shall occur on or before issuance of a final site plan approval, final plat, or one of those, or the latest or the earliest, or the whim of who?
Typically, it'd be final site plans for commercial development, true commercial and multifamily development, and then a final plat for residential that is platted. So it's really whichever one's appropriate, more so than which one's first.
Well, I read it, and I don't, you know, I'm asking myself, what does that really mean? Okay.
We'll check and see if there are edits we can make to make it clearer.
And then on page 15, halfway down, to evaluate the distribution of the development's automobile trips on the county's thoroughfare map. I mean, is there any actual process to evaluate? I mean, who evaluates? How is it evaluated? If Ms. Bond and staff said, yeah, we understand what we evaluate, Richard, then I'm just going to wink and nod and go get a cup of coffee. But if it's mysterious or unknown and undefined, then this may be an opportunity to define it. Now, I'm not necessarily looking for answers today, Mr. Davis. It's just things to talk about.
Could you tell me the section you're looking at again, though, so we can look at it later?
Halfway down, under 523, under the blue underline, in addition to analysis of new net automobile, blah, 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 then it says, to evaluate the distribution of the development's automobile trips on the county's thoroughfare map. I don't know who does that or how that's done, or, again, it's all black box voodoo to me, so if it happens, fine. Just underneath that, it says administration of a, in quotations, mobility fee system. I don't know what that is. Is that what we're doing now, or do we need better words for that?
Yeah, we should probably be referring to that as the alternative-
Yeah, I don't know what that was. Here's a fun one. Under 5232, reasonable proximity to the development site. Reasonable proximity to the development site. Well, I think, you know, 30, 40 miles is reasonable, so who gets to define what's reasonable? I mean, if it's we, the people, if the applicant gets to decide that's reasonable, because we, the people, of course, have all the power and control, then that's fine. And the government just has to say, well, the applicant thinks that this is reasonable. If not, I'm just not sure what reasonable means.
Yeah, and so for things like that, the policy will set the stage for more prescriptive code and procedures that follow, so the policy won't be reviewed as the code in this case. So reasonable will get the fine for you.
Reasonable in government, I mean, I don't know about that. Next page, on page 16, Manatee County- Next page, on page 16, Manatee County, towards the bottom under blue, Manatee County shall adopt transportation review standards. Okay, are we going to see those? Because, you know, you get into the details of this stuff and that's where it gets all messed up because now, all of a sudden, someone, you know, back in a cubicle develops transportation review standards and we all go, whoa, wait a minute.
Yes, Mr. Galliano and Mr. Miller are working on traffic study guidelines now. These have been adopted administratively in the past, but if the planning commission were interested in it, I'm sure Mr. Galliano would be happy to come and.
Well, since we're doing an overall, you know, we look at all of this stuff, it may be time to rip the Band-Aid off and look at some of these things. I don't know. Y'all can discuss it and see if it's worthy or not. Okay, that is all on that ordinance. Then on number four, and I apologize, but you asked me to read it. Don't ask me to read it. You don't want me to. Page four, it contemplates DRIs again. We don't do DRIs anymore, but I guess this is just historical since there are still DRIs out there?
We still have a couple of DRIs on the books, but don't think we'll see another new one. So, two parts, one, an abundance of caution we left, the other, knowing that this will be incorporated into the rewrite that's being worked on now. And so, some of these policies will get a little bit further refined with that. So, we were trying to be surgical and it sounds like we nicked a couple of places we didn't mean to during the surgery, but we'll take a look at it and get it cleaned up.
On page five at the top, master development plan, blah, 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 blah. In parentheses, writes away in parentheses, major roads. Not sure what a major road is.
Understood. Thoroughfare plant, thoroughfare roadways designated thoroughfares as intended, but we'll make sure that that's clear as well.
Down at the bottom, instead of, so multimodal site access and safety analysis, that's the thing that we're doing here and you're, yeah, okay, fine. Okay, that's, I've already answered that. You already answered that. Page 10, under applicability, halfway down, proposed land use or zoning can be reasonably expected. Reasonably, hmm, that's like, hmm, reasonable about me? Or, because I have a whole definition that's probably different than what, what the heck is, Ms. Schenk's over there giggling at me going like, yeah, I don't know what reasonable is either. So, anyway, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah, and so, reasonable in this case is tied to the phrase at the end where they do potential trip generation for both scenarios using professionally accepted methods. And so, they would be agreed upon between staff and applicants, professionals there.
Well, yeah, okay. That's nice to say, but if the applicant says it's reasonable, then by default, it is because we, the people, have all the power and control. So, we start with the applicant saying it's reasonable, and then if the government doesn't think it's reasonable, they have to come back and prove to us that it's not. It's okay. I'm a we, the people guy, Clark.
All right, understood.
All right, fine. That's nothing. That's nothing. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks for reading that for us.
Yeah, no problem. If you told us, I'm honored. That's why I'm here.
You're the man.
All right. I apologize for that, but it was necessary. Don't give it to me unless you want me to read it. Anything else for staff, staff presentation, consultants, comments, if not, Chairwoman entertain a motion on item three? We'll take them separate. We did, didn't we? I thought we did.
I think you did.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. Yes. I thought I did. Okay, I did. Yes. So, will Chairwoman entertain a motion on three?
I'll understand it.
Let's see. We have a motion by Ms. Prosser, second by Mr. Delezline to approve. We may vote. Motion carries unanimously seven to nothing. Thank you. Now, we'll entertain a motion on item number four. Motion by Mr. Delezline, second by Ms. Prosser. Motion passes unanimously seven to nothing. Thank you. It is 10:30. We're going to take our short 10-minute break for the, and we'll be back in 10 minutes.
Ordinance 2422, amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 29, Educational Facility Impact Fees. Amending Chapter 29, Article 7 of the Manatee County Code of Ordinances as amended and adopting a new schedule of educational facilities' impact fees effective as of September 9, 2024, based on the most recent impact fee study completed by the Manatee County School Board in accordance with the Florida Impact Fee Act.
All right, who's here for staff? Mr. Pennley?
Good morning.
Go Vols.
Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. Pleasure to be here today. Yes, go Vols. I am here today as the executive planner for the school district of Manatee County. I'm here to talk to you about the proposed Educational Impact Fee Ordinance 2422. I also have other colleagues with me here today, including Joe Renaldi, who is our Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and Carson Bice, right here, who will be presenting very specific information about the impact fee study. Mr. Bice has, he is a impact fee consultant that was retained by the school board. He's conducted hundreds of impact fee studies, and in fact, he's done all of our studies since 2002, and he's done previous impact fee studies for the county as well. So, some of this will be redundant with what Nicole mentioned earlier, but a quick refresher on what impact fees are. They're a one-time fee paid on new development. In our case, it's only for residential development. So, non-residential development, we view that as not having an impact on the school district because it doesn't generate students, so it's only the residential development. And these fees are used to offset the impact generated by new residents or new students in those residential units. They are, they are one component of a funding system that we use, and it is for capital improvements. The impact fees are enabled, or the enabling legislation is through chapter or section 163.31801. I think Ms. Schenk spoke to that earlier, or maybe it was Denise Greer. That is the Florida Impact Fee Act. And it has several requirements, but the more important ones are that it must be based on the most recent and localized data. Our previous study was conducted in 2017, so we feel that that data is getting stale at this point. There is not a specific timeframe outlined in that study, but as Nicole mentioned earlier, five years, the generally accepted rule of thumb. It also requires that if an impact fee is adopted, that the effective date of the fees be at least 90 days after the adoption. That provides us time to notice in, on our webpage and through other means that the impact fees are going to go up. So, it gives developers or home buyers a chance to get permits in prior to that date. The fees also must have a rational nexus or a connection with the actual impact generated by the residential development. And if the impact fees are based on or exceed a certain percentage, then they have to be implemented over a period of years. And Carson Bice will show you how that's implemented in a little while. The school district, or school board had a series of workshops on impact fees, and we had community meetings. We had representatives of some of the largest developers in Manatee County at those meetings. We had the Chamber of Commerce. We had the Chamber of Commerce, we had the Manatee Sarasota Building Information, or Industry Association, representation there, as well as citizens, and we took all that information, presented it to the school board, and they adopted Resolution 2023-004. The reason they adopt a resolution is they do not have the authority under the Florida Impact Fee Act to adopt an impact fee. They can only recommend that fee to the county, and the county has the authority to adopt the fee countywide. Today, I'm going to go through the amendments to Chapter 29, Section 7 of the Code of Ordinances, and that is the first part of this presentation, but it's kind of all mixed together because we're going to get into specific information, especially what Carson Bice is talking to. The, the primary change in this impact fee study is that we are changing from a model where in the, since 2002, we've assessed fees based on type of dwelling unit. So a single-family house, whether it was 1,000 square feet or 5,000 square feet, was assessed the same amount. The current fee for that was $6,127, regardless of the size of the house. So when, when we initiated the study, we met with county staff early on, and we wanted to make sure that we coincided or collaborated with them on how they collect, and I think when Nicole presented to you, she showed you that there is various tiers that they are assessing fees on. So we have converted over to a tiered system regardless of type of dwelling unit. So that's the primary change in our, in the way we're assessing fees. The tiers that you see here are the same as the county, except the last two, the 1,701 to 2,200 square feet, and the 2,201 or more square feet. Those, if you look across as what the proposed fees are, they're, they're exactly the same all four years. So in effect, we really have five categories, just like the county does. And you'll notice that these are implemented over a period of four years because we met the statutory threshold that says you have to, to implement these over a period of years if you increase the fees by a certain percentage. When we submitted the resolution and the study to the county, the county staff took it and they reviewed it for compliance with the comprehensive plan, and they, they prepared a staff report on it, and there's several policies here I'd like to point out to you where it complies with the comprehensive plan. The first of those is policy 10.1.3.1, which says that you'll use impact fees to pay for future developments proportionate cost of capital improvements necessary to maintain adoptive levels of service. The study that, that is being presented to you today implements that policy, and it determines a per-dwelling-unit impact on school facilities. Policy 10.2.1.2 says to ensure that future development pays a proportionate share of the cost of capital facility capacity needed to accommodate new development through impact fees. So this impact fee study evaluates and identifies the school capacity necessitated by new development, and it establishes the proportionate share of cost for educational facilities. And finally, policy 11.1.7.5 says to encourage the establishment of impact fees on a countywide basis as appropriate, and this study does implement fees on a countywide basis. Some specific changes to the ordinance itself, or proposed in the ordinance itself, which is amending the Code of Ordinances Sections 2-29.81 through 2-29, or 93, are that, number one, the, the ordinance says that the fees would not be implemented or become effective until September 9. Reason for that is we have a county commission date next week, and if the county commission approves it, then we will immediately provide notice, and the county will provide notice, and that is required to be at least 90 days, so the fees would be implemented on September, or yeah, September the 9th. Other primary changes are that it provides a definition of accessory dwelling unit, and it provides a definition of dwelling unit, and it deletes definitions of the various types of dwelling units that occur right now, such as single-family, multifamily, duplex townhome. The reason for that is that we're looking at a size-based approach now, and it deletes the fee schedule based on the type of dwelling unit, and adds a fee schedule based on the size of dwelling. It deletes a section on independent fee calculations and appeals. Over the past 22 years, while impact fees have been in place, I think we've had maybe four independent fee calculations. Most of those were for affordable housing, and I'll address that in just a moment. And the other is that it eliminates the, the appeals process. We've never had an appeal of our, of our impact fees. It exempts accessory dwelling units, which is something new that the county is recognizing, so there would not be an impact fee for that. The county currently does not assess an impact fee for accessory dwelling units either. And it, it provides a 35% rate reduction for affordable housing, and again, the previous studies that we had, while they're not, they weren't necessarily proffered as affordable housing, that's what they were. So we're automatically saying you can have a 35% discount on the rate for affordable housing because the school board recognizes the challenges that affordable housing providers have in Manatee County, and it requires that the study be reviewed every five years.
Mr. Penley?
Yes.
The lure you refer to is an agreement between the county and the developer, not a separate lure between the developer and the school board.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't want to be in the business of lures. So in conclusion, the school board adopted Resolution 23-004 that recommended new impact fees. That, that resolution was based on the study that was prepared by Tischler, Bice, and Associates. Tischler, Bice will be presenting that information here momentarily, and it determined the amount of fees based on, on size of dwelling. The fees are based on the most recent localized data, meaning that the data actually is from construction costs on Manatee County schools, from land acquisition costs from Manatee County schools, and for local population demographics in Manatee County. The school board transmitted that resolution to the, to the county in December of 2023 for review and action. At the same time, we transmitted proposed text amendments to the Code of Ordinances, which we just covered very quickly, and this, this request is consistent with the Florida School Impact Fee Act, or I'm sorry, Florida Impact Fee Act, generally accepted practices in impact fee studies and the county comprehensive plan. I can answer any questions, or if you'd prefer, we can get into the study and come back to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Penley at this point?
I just had one. Did you have any incongruencies between your study by this group and the other consultants that were hired by the county?
The, I think I'm going to ask Carson to, to expand on that, but there was collaboration between the two consultants. I'm not aware that there's any incongruencies.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Penley, can you go back a few slides? Keep going. Go, go. Yeah, background is spelled wrong.
Wow. Do you have a red pen?
While I'm here, man.
Wow, thanks.
You're welcome. Well, I didn't want you to put that in front of the county commission, that's embarrassing. I mean, you are a school district.
I think we're going to have to give you a B on this.
I'll take the C.
What else to tell you?
So B-A-K-G-R-O.
I'm sorry, Mr. Penley.
Is there going to be any income difference between splitting it from housing or beds to square footage wise?
We were, we never assessed fees based on bedrooms. We assessed it based on type of dwelling. So a single-family had a fee, regardless of the size. And so...
But what would have been, if you had enacted this three years ago, what would be the difference between a standard house now and asking for? Would it generate more money or less money?
It's, it's going to be approximately the same, and over the, the four-year period, it will ramp up. And we, we ran some quick calculations to make sure that we actually would not have a deficit in our revenue stream here based on the affordable housing discounts, because we're seeing more and more affordable housing.
See, I, I would think that a bigger house would have less kids, and a smaller house would have more kids. And that's, that's just my thinking-wise.
And multifamily might not generate. Why is the size, why was that changed to size? What's the benefit of that?
To, to basically have the same type of system that the county uses now.
Not more efficient necessarily. I'm just sorry, I just...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Not more efficient or more appropriate necessarily.
No, just to be unified with what the county...
That's incongruency.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Bice?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Carson Bice, president of Tischler, Bice. It's my pleasure to be here in front of you this morning. I'm from out of state, do you need my county of residency? Okay, Montgomery County, Maryland.
I'm from there, too.
Oh, are you? Well, I am going to tell you a little bit about sort of the assumptions behind the impact fee study, but first, a little bit about us, for those of you who weren't here when we did the county's impact fees, I think the last time was in 2015. We were based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho, and we do impact fees all over the country, and I've done more impact fees actually than any other firm, and certainly more school impact fees than any other firm. A little bit about the impact fee study that I'm going to show you today. It does have three components. That includes the construction of additional classroom space, that can be in the form of additions or brand-new brick-and-mortar schools. It includes the acquisition of land, and it also includes the acquisition of buses.
I have a question right there. Construction of additional classroom space, not libraries, not gymnasiums?
Well, good point. I, I say classroom space as a catch-all, sometimes, maybe a better term is permanent student stations, which includes all of those cafeterias, libraries, gymnasiums. Yeah, thank you. I will clarify that for the commission. I appreciate that comment. Similar to the approach taken by Vanesh for the county's fees, most income, or most school impact fees are done using what we call the consumption-based or incremental-expansion approach. It's somewhat formulaic in terms of it's based on your current level of service, like park acres per thousand, number of square feet per student station, et cetera. It does define your existing level of service by definition. We're not correcting existing deficiencies with the impact fees, which is something we have to guard against, and it is based on your current level of service to provide, or to maintain that current level of service going into the future. One of the things we do have to include in an impact fee methodology is we have to guard against new development paying twice, once through the impact fee, and then again through another stream of revenue, which could be property tax or sales tax that's going to pay existing bonds, or other revenue sources that may be dedicated to certain capacity projects. And within this study, we have given credits for sell tax, sales tax bond payments, also the bond payments on certificates of participation, sometimes referred to as COPs, and then debt service payments on future bonded debts. Mike did a lot of my work for me in his presentation, and so we did do an analysis of students, student generation or pupil generation rates by size of house, and there was collaboration between our firm, Vanesh, and the county in terms of establishing the tiers. As Mike mentioned, this is based on geo-coded data for students in Manatee County, so it's very specific to the county. The question was brought up in, in Mike's presentation about, you know, why switch from a per-unit, or what we call a one-size-fits-all approach, to, to what we call a progressive impact fee schedule? And more and more jurisdictions are moving in this direction, and the reason why is the proponents, and I happen to be one of those, will, will, will claim that, one, it's better from a proportionality standpoint, because under a one-size-fits-all, a single-family unit is paying the same price regardless of size, and in most jurisdictions, we can make, you can make a, a link between the size of the house and the number of people that reside there, the number of public school students that reside there, the number of vehicles available, which affect trip generation rates, and those sorts of things. And what is different from community to community is where that leveling off point is. And so I think it was Ms. Prosser who, who may have mentioned, the larger the house, sometimes there's fewer people. And we did find that, in fact, in a, in a fiscal study we did 24 years ago in Sarasota County, just south of here, where we looked at specific residential subdivisions, and to your point, the large lot sort of McMansion subdivision generated absolutely no children to the Sarasota County schools. But those, those units, you have to remember, were 5, 6, and 700,000 square feet, where our largest house, housing size here cuts off at 2,200 square feet.
May I ask one question, to be rude? And do you take into account a age and cultural conduct for children going to school?
No. We take an age in terms of where, where to place them within the K through, or PK through 5, 6, 7, 8, et cetera, but the other demographic characteristics.
So if somebody's at the post-child schooling age, that doesn't matter, and if they're in a cultural group that typically, like South Florida, I came from there, it's, it's a Latin community by a large percentage in Miami, it's a different count.
Right, they have larger household sizes, right. But again, you have to remember, impact fees are based on averages, you know, the average cost of land. We're going to buy parcels greater than, we're going to buy parcels less than, some, some houses are going to generate more kids, some are going to generate less, but it's, we use averages, and it's, it's a countywide average. And so we feel good about the numbers, and so the pupil generation rates are shown here. They do not distinguish between type of house, it's just by size of house. And then the bottom table shows the projection of new students over the next 10 years, and we're projecting at this point slightly over 7,000 additional school students in the public school system in Manatee County.
I find the middle school numbers quirky. Where do those kids go?
What do you mean, where do they go?
Well, there's 18,000 in elementary and 14,000 in high, and where's the other, where's the other 5,000 kids in middle schools? Or is it just because there's only three years in middle school?
Right, there's three, yeah, right.
All right.
Yeah.
So there's not like this population explosion.
This is a little dim, so it's hard, it's hard to read.
Where'd they go? Okay, fine, so it's just a function of number of years.
Right, okay. So this slide here shows the planned permanent capacity additions that the school district plans to make. Some of these, these are additions, some of these are new, new constructions of new school space. In summary, the planned expansion at the elementary level is 1,768 student stations compared to 2,426 at the middle level, and 1,112 at the high school level.
Is, I'm sorry, go back one.
Sure.
The East County K-3, is that the new one in the northeast quadrant?
Yeah, East County K-8.
The one east of Burnside or wherever it is, or is that the one, is that the one that you and I did near Lorraine and, I mean, E-line?
It's the East County K-8, and it is the one that is east of E-line on Academic Avenue.
All right, so that's the one that's in the northeast quadrant that we worked on years ago. And isn't there another one east of Burnside, but that's, is that...
There is another one east of Burnside, but it's not on our five-year plan.
Got it.
Where we have a contract on the property that says we have to close on the property once the infrastructure's in place, which would be by December of 2027.
Thank you. This shows the, the plant, or the construction cost assumptions that we're using in the analysis. There's summarized, summarized there with the... There's summarized there with the red box. At the elementary level, the assumption is $333 a square foot, it's 403 for middle, and $365 per square foot for high schools.
And that's with the ancillary spaces you described?
This slide shows, what we like to do is plug in these planned permanent capacity expansions and compare those to the enrollment projections, and show you what the sort of end state would be at the end of the 10 years, which is really hard to read with this, this light. I think it's 84% at the end of the 10 years with these capacity expansions at the elementary level, and then it's, I think it's 95% if you don't make these expansions at the end of the 10 years. Then at middle school, it is 75%, and 92% if you don't make these expansions. And then the situation's a little more serious at the high school, where even with these planned expansions over the next 10 years, you're still over 100% capacity at the end of the 10 years. So what does this tell us? This tells us that the planned expansions of capacity in the next five years isn't gonna be sufficient to house that student growth that we're gonna have in years five through 10, which means that we still have to have impact fees in place in order to fund the planned school, excuse me, planned school construction that will happen in years five through 10.
So, if you go back one...
Sure.
This is probably more a question for Mr. Penley. So if the, let's just take elementary schools. If 2032 to 2033, you're at 88% capacity, I mean, without it, you're at 95%. You haven't reached 100. Is there a target percentage that you're trying to get to, Mr. Penley, in the future?
So, so we have school concurrency in place in Manti County, and for, and it varies depending on the school size, and honestly, with all the development that's occurring right now, we're just, we're just trying to outpace it. So, the concurrency levels for elementary are set at 110% of capacity. For middle school, they're set at 105% of student capacity, and for high school, they're set at 100%. Carson mentioned that our high school numbers were going to exceed 100%. What you're not seeing on here is we have now programmed another high school on our five-year plan, so that will add a lot more student stations. Keep in mind, this is a point in time, so what you're seeing here on numbers is ever-evolving, but you have to draw the line somewhere when the study occurs. So this information is, we've actually got more student stations coming online than what you're seeing here.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Then moving on to the cost of land, this is based on recent purchases and land swaps, so we get a weighted average cost when we compare the 193 acres to the actual cost. We get a cost of $75,487, which I think is a very conservative number.
These are just quirky to me. So, if you go back one, these are the things that make us ask questions. The county had $160,000 an acre to buy a EMS building property, and a high school site doesn't have nearly that value? It just makes me scratch my head and say, I'm just not really, I don't know how that comes about. But I don't wanna dwell into it here, because I'm not gonna get an answer.
Right.
But when you look at that stuff, and you've got 160 grand for the county, 28,750 an acre for the school, I don't know how to give it...
I'm sure, well, first of all, we tend to be conservative, because we wanna keep you out of court.
Yeah, and these are, these are actual purchase prices that we've paid for land over the study period. Now, since then, we've, again, we had to draw a line in the sand. Since that time, we've contracted for a couple additional sites, and those sites were around 110,000 to 120,000 per acre, so it's coming up.
All right.
Well, and I can add to this, that when I was developing projects, we didn't want the school board opposing us, and our pricing was according.
You're absolutely right. And most developers want schools in their area, so it'd be like, yeah, sure, just build me a school. So, okay.
But, you know, like I said, we tend to be conservative, and we like to see what you've actually spent on land versus speculating, that, you know, just pulling a number out of the air, we're gonna spend 250K three years from now? Well, you haven't yet, so that's why that assumption is what it is. I put that slide in twice, sorry about that. This shows the cost for the buses. There are three types of buses the district owns, so we look at what does it cost to buy new today, to get that asset value and the cost per student? And then this table sort of walks you through the impact fee calculation as we make our way down the table. It summarizes all the assumptions we've talked about, that square foot per student, the cost per square foot, the number of acres per student, the cost per acre, and then the buses. So we get the gross capital cost per student. From that, and that's illustrated in the first purple line, that gross capital cost. But again, we have to factor in the credits, which are shown in red, and when we get to the bottom in another purple circle, we'll see that the net cost per student varies from 15,875 to 46, 611, or excuse me, 35, 875, compared to 46, 811, and 45, 246 for high school students.
While you're on this, can you, is this delineate the county portion, state portion, and federal portions?
So this is all the county's cost.
Only county?
Mm-hmm. Only the county's cost.
And do you have a total number of how much money is paid per student to put that in place here, using all funds available?
I sure understand.
So we get funds from all different places?
Right. You used to get capital outlay, debt service, those kind of things, right?
And so with the number of students, because I did a calculation one time when they said what the costs or what they're receiving for 50,000 students or something like that, and the number was surprisingly high. Do you have any idea?
I think that includes the operating cost.
Agreed.
Right.
I'm just saying, what it costs every time a student comes to Manatee County?
Right. That's something we don't know, because we didn't look at the operating side.
Does anybody know, you think?
No. I mean, I'm not sure, you'd have to ask my own.
I know, how silly of me. Somebody's gotta write a check. Okay, my bad.
Right, that's what we call a fiscal impact analysis, not an impact fee study.
Okay, that's another step. Got it.
Right.
I'll stay around and see what happens.
Impact fees are assigned to capital cost.
I get you. Okay, I've got my computer screen here, so I can read this a little better. So this shows the proposed fees. We do show, much like Vinesh, we show what the maximum supportable fee is, because when we calculate the fees and take it to the school board, we don't know if the county commission is gonna decide to invoke the extraordinary circumstances and try to go for 100%. So we show it just for edification. So if we, as we work our way down the table, we show the net capital cost per student for elementary, middle, and high schools, and then we apply those to those pupil generation rates by size of house, and then we get the impact fees. And as we work our way from left to right on this table, you see the maximum supportable amount. We compare that to the current fees that are in place today, and then we show what your statutory limit is, assuming you're gonna cut it off at 50%. And so then we show in green there, on the green heading, what the proposed fees are as part of the study, which range from $2,957 per unit for the 750 or less, all the way up to $9,190 for the units that are 21, or 22,000, or excuse me, 2,200 square feet are greater, and then we also show the net increase or decrease beside, and then the percentage increases, and then for the maximum supportable versus the proposed. I know that's complicated. And then the next slide shows the proposed phasing that is in place, which is what Mike Penley went over during his presentation, because we are proposing 50% for two of the, over 25%, I think, for three of the categories. We are proposing this four-year phasing for all the fees. And then finally, a fee comparison, and this is about six months old, so it may have changed, but I'm not a big fan of these, because, you know, you never know, you're not really doing an apples-to-apples comparison, because you don't know if the jurisdiction adopted 100% of the fee, 80% of the fee, et cetera. You don't know if decisions were made not to include land, et cetera, et cetera, and then, of course, you've got the age of the studies. But you can see here that the fees don't bump you up, or the proposed fees don't bump you up much more than where you are now, which is sort of the middle of the pack, where the maximum fee for a single family would be $7,055, and Osceola has always been the highest in the state, and they're in the $12,000 range now.
Charlie, it just makes you scratch your head. You know, how can Sarasota County possibly do it at 2,300 a student? And we're at 7 grand?
Right.
And it...
We did their last study, and it's a, it's a policy choice, right? I mean, the maximum supportable fee we calculated was much greater than that, that was what was adopted. And so one of the problems that jurisdictions like Sarasota, and we did Flagler County recently, where they had a history of not adopting anywhere near the maximum supportable rate 20 years ago, 10 years ago, then you're hamstrung by this 50%, and you're, you know, you're so far behind the eight ball.
So, what may help then would be to add another column that says maximum support, maximum supportable amount, so that if I were to see, like Sarasota County, maximum supportable amount's 30,000, but they're only charging 2, then that's their decision. So it...
Right. I agree, but that would involve tracking down everybody's impact fee studies, which aren't always available online.
Well, okay, but everybody isn't next to us like Sarasota County, and for like it or not, we're often compared to Sarasota County in educational facilities and everything else. So it might be nice to know what our neighbor's doing.
Well, I can certainly do that for the board meeting next week, the ones that I can find.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would, I don't care what Bavard's doing, quite frankly, but, you know, and the school board talks about all, we lose teachers to Sarasota County, we lose bus drivers, we lose all, and, but, gosh, how do they do that at 2,300, anyway? So you get the point.
Right. And with that, I'm open to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Before we get into questions, we'll open the public hearing. We're gonna open the public comment portion of this. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and discuss this item? Anyone in the public that would like to come forward and discuss this item? So you know, and come forward, close the public comment? All right, commissioners' comments, staff comments, anything? I have some. It's minor, Mr. Penley, it's okay, it's not gonna be too painful. On, oh, I don't even know what page it is, because it doesn't say. So on the ordinance, mine says page 8 of 17. It says residential development permit means building permit, unit shall include the installation of a mobile home. I'm not sure that we have that defined somewhere, in something somewhere? Is a mobile home defined?
They deleted it in the definitions.
Yeah, I think so, so I'm not sure what a mobile home is anymore.
The 750 square foot took care of that, I believe.
It's under the definitions area, where public residential development permit, school board, it just says, purposes of this division, the construction or addition of a residential unit shall include the installation of a mobile home. And I don't know, is mobile home defined somewhere?
No, it's scratched out.
Scratched out, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It's deleted.
Redlined.
Yeah.
It's what?
Redlined on page 8.
Right, not on page 8.
The square footage took care of that. 750 square foot took care of mobile homes.
There's no more definition.
But, I don't know on that.
Am I the only one seeing this? Or it says mobile home? It's not redlined.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You're talking about the definition, near the bottom of page 8, that says residential development permit?
Yes.
In italics, and we didn't touch that definition. But, mobile home is, I'm pretty sure it's defined by statute, so we would check that before we move forward in case we need to straighten it.
Okay, good enough. And then, oh, this is just, I'm not even gonna mention it, because Mr. Penley will throw a rock at me. It was just a Scribner's error. I'll skip it.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Is there any overview of the school board's spending? And I don't mean that to be, you know, questioning it, but do you get graded, does the school board get graded on its performance of expenditures versus the state? Do you qualify as a gold standard, or is there some review of performance? And we know that you're spending the money very well, not, no implication, of course. It's just a question.
Good morning, Joe Rinaldi, Deputy Director of Operations. There is no, there is no grading?
Okay.
No, I have not been sworn.
This is how it's slated.
Sorry, Joe.
No problem. No, there isn't any grading system. However, we do have both internal auditors that review the actual expenditures of all of our funding, sales tax, impact fees, and that. So from an audit standpoint, we do on a regularly basis present to them and get comments as to our accuracy of that spending.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, any other thing, anything else? If not, chair will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Gervais Leisler, and second by Mr. Rutledge. We may vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Go Valls, thank you, Mr. Penley. I'm sorry, the over/under was 11, 10.
Rocky Top.
Looks like I'm paying off today.
Pain misery.
Anything else from Ms. Greer or Ms. Schenk? All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.